Welcome, everyone. I'm calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order at seven o'clock. Official meeting notification.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices into the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
I got to have everyone join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, your role call.
Medved.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Barney is here. Loth?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Item three, election of board officers. We just had our election recently, and every year we reorganize the board based on people on the board. So first up, we have president. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Russ Ewer for president.
Second.
Mr. Brown with the motion. Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? I will say I support this decision. This was not a coup attempt to get rid of me. Russ and I, as my vice president, we've had a discussion, and we feel it's time to transition into a new role for him, and I respect that he wants to take on that position, and I welcome it, and I think hopefully the board does as well. So, Mr. Loth.
Yeah, I was, I supported also. I was considering it, and Russ's name came up, and I thought, hey, it's a good idea. He's been, you know, spending a fair amount of time here working with Jake and Chris Reuter, Dr. Reuter. So I think it's a good move, and thank you for supporting it.
No problem. I did enjoy my time as president. We had some tumultuous times to go through, but I think we've handled it well, and the district, I think, is in a great place moving forward, and I think this is a good time for us to transition as well. So I will open it up to a vote unless anyone else has another comment.
Yeah, I just appreciate, appreciate that support. Wanted to thank you for your ability to kind of lead from a place of calm during some of that turbulence. That makes a huge difference as we operate as a board, so thank you for that leadership.
My honor. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We have a new president, Russ Ewer, and at this point, he gets to take over the meeting.
Here we go. Item three, B, vice president. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Eric Brown for vice president.
I'll second.
Kim with the motion and Mr. Barney with the second.
Medved.
Sorry, and I've had with the second. CNN or hearing any discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item C, treasurer.
I move to nominate Tom Barney.
Second.
Mr. Medved with the motion. Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yep.
That's not what I meant to say.
Respectfully ask.
Decline.
That you consider Michael Loth as treasurer.
I amend my, my, I meant to say Michael Loth. I apologize.
And I'll second.
I have. It's been a while.
One vote.
I'll second.
Mr. Medved with the motion for Mr. Loth as treasurer. Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
I support Mike as treasurer.
I, I was trying to pass it over to Eric, and because he's a financial guy. However, it's not about me, and Eric showed interest in being the vice president, so I said, okay, that's fine. And I was pretty sure Tom didn't want it, that he wanted to remain clerk, so that's why I looked at Tom kind of funny, like, do you really?
When I looked down, I saw clerk. That's why I said that. Sorry.
So anyway, we got it figured out. Sounds good to me. Any other discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, clerk.
Like to make a motion to nominate Thomas Barney as clerk.
I'll second.
Mr. Pop with the motion. Mr. Medved with the second. Any discussion?
Well, thank you for that. I will gladly accept that role.
You'll continue unfaithfully.
We know you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. See none? No further. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item E, CISA one delegate.
Just as a point of discussion, are you our current CISA one delegate?
Yes.
And how do you feel about that role?
Well, currently, I am also on the CISA one board, which my term will be up. Well, as we transition over, so this delegate obligation is really one evening at this point for their annual meeting, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, I will nominate Tracy Pollak as CISA one delegate.
I'll second.
Mr. Barney with the motion. Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion? Further discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Moving on, item four, reports a district administrator update. Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you. We, as asked last month when the FBLA team, Future Business Leaders of America, went off to state, there was discussion by the board to ask for kind of a recap on how they did when you approved an overnight travel. So Mr. Martin, our leader of that group for the co-curricular, shared with me that we had an outstanding showing at the State Leadership Conference in Green Bay. There were over a hundred and sixty high schools that were represented in that competition, and we were pleased to report that we finished fourth overall out of the hundred and sixty schools that competed. And we needed to finish in the top four to move on to nationals, so we did qualify for nationals, and we had more students than I can name here that placed either a state champion, second place, third place, or fourth place. So thank you for approving that travel and supporting that program annually. Mr. Martin's very happy with the results our kids have done, and it's great to see that we have some future Business Leaders of America doing very well in Germantown. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Pollak. I was unable to attend the first meeting of the year by the Performing Arts Center Advisory Team, but Mr. Pollak joined that team as a representative of the school board last week.
Thank you. So April sixteenth, there was a handful of us that got together as kind of a kickoff for this PAC Community Series Advisory Team. We had a good discussion about what has been done in the past, some challenges that we had run into, but we all kind of agreed upon a goal to take a look at what kind of offerings we can have for this community at the PAC moving forward. Like I said, there's a handful of us. I think for the time being, we will kind of still keep it small, but personally, my opinion, I think this group will hopefully expand to include other community members. I should have mentioned this. Heather, Sarah Unertl, I represented kind of the leadership, I suppose, of the district at that meeting. We also had a couple of community members who have been actively involved at the PAC with a number of different things. And so, like I said, we kind of reviewed the past, looked at the current, looked toward the future. Heather had a couple of takeaways, and so we do have another meeting scheduled for May twenty-second, where we'll, the group will get back together and kind of keep discussing things as we continue to move forward. So very positive, very exciting things. Hopefully, with a couple of the ideas we threw out there, we can make it happen, and I think the, if it happens to move forward, I think the community will be able to have a lot of fun and come out to the PAC and enjoy it since we're all paying for it.
Right. I think as now we've matured into five years at the PAC, it's about how do we make sure that the programming we're offering supports not just the school district, but more importantly, the community, and Mr. Pollak's point of funding that through referendum. So I got to give Heather Ellis a lot of credit because she has been spearheaded putting this team together, so it's not all on her shoulders to make decisions of what happens year round. So to have the diversity of people at the table to provide their feedback, I think will be beneficial.
Yeah, just to throw out there, just for people to have a better sense of what we discuss, we did go through a couple of high-level event types. So, you know, music tribute bands and classical music and choirs, educational offerings, theatrical offerings, and then holiday and special occasion events as well. So, you know, where we can try to open up more opportunities for the community to come together at the PAC, that's kind of the broad goal for us right now.
Thank you. Speaking of the PAC, this coming weekend, we have the spring performance of The Hunchback of Notre Dame. Tickets are on sale. I think a few of you have already purchased. So April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh at seven PM will be the showing, and the final showing is on the twenty-eighth on Sunday at two o'clock. So hopefully you can all attend, and those watching will attend. And then just one last thing, falls, or I'm sorry, spring sports are in full swing, weather bearing. We've had a few makeups already with some rainy weather, but just this week, we have baseball and softball games Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So a lot of cool spring sports going on. I was at the high school at the end of the day last week, Thursday, and the parking lot was packed, and everyone was wearing their uniforms and getting ready for soccer games, baseball games, softball games. So we're in the full swing. That's all I have this month.
Thank you. Move on. B, student representative report.
Hello. Happy Monday.
Happy Monday.
So this month at Amy Bell, we are driving the theme of courage, exploring courage in various contexts. We're empowering students to recognize and develop their own courageous skills. Our school community will together, come together for our Amy Bell Fest, celebrating our growth and learning. Thanks to our community sponsors, parents enjoyed a delightful donut breakfast with their students, courtesy of the PTA. And get ready, because the fan favorite book fair is headed to Amy Bell next week's. Students are gearing up to stock up on their summer reads. Over at County Line, they had an eventful month filled with lots of excitement. They kicked things off by celebrating the solar eclipse with class engaging in various activities from reading books, watching videos, and making viewing boxes. The highlight of the month was the all-school assembly where Mr. Eisenbach bravely volunteered and received a pie in the face, a moment enjoyed by students and staff. Additionally, many students participated in the Wisconsin Forward Testing, showcasing their academic skills. Wrapping up April, PE classes enjoyed a field trip. Kindergarten and first grade went to the Flora's, second and third went to Skyzone, and fourth and fifth explored Adventure Rock. With the energy still high, County Line heads into the last couple of months on a positive note. As the eagles soar into the final stretch of the school year, they're embracing a wave of unique and thrilling learning experience. With high energy and enthusiasm, they're eager to finish strong, anticipating a lot of growth and joyful leading ahead. From engaging assemblies to enriching field trips and class exploration, scholars have been immersed in a diverse range of activities fostering positive learning. A highlight of the month was witnessing the solar eclipse, a true learning opportunity for all. As the third and fifth graders wrap up their Forward State testing, excitement is abound. But perhaps the most memorable moment was the school's trip to Hollywood for the Friends and Family Dance, where students and parents alike danced the night away, celebrating and creating unforgettable memories. Rockfield, Amy Bell kicked, or at Rockfield, April kicked off with an inspiring all-school assembly where they also focused on courage. They're reflecting on courage as an act of a choice, what is right and helpful and kind, even in the face of difficulty or fear. With a calendar packed with field trips, concerts, there's plenty of excitement for the young scholars. The students and staff are thrilled to make the most of the final moments. Amidst all the chaos, Kennedy Middle School students are encouraged to seize the opportunity to reflect, grow, and continue achieving greatness in the final weeks of quarter four. Eighth graders are focusing on building effective work habits to transition smoothly into high school next year. With a plethora of after-school activities from spring track, key club, science club, AV club, math counts, and talent show practices, the students are plenty busy. However, the highlight this month was undoubtedly the PTA's Hawaiian luau, where Hawaiian shirts, leis, grass shirts, shorts, and sunglasses were all set, and the Crusaders are now ready for summer. As May approaches, GHS students are gearing up for the advanced placement exams, aiming to earn college credits. Despite the intense focus in learning, there are plenty of after-school activities in full swing. Their dramatic impact is delightfully or diligently preparing for their production of The Hunchback of Notre Dame, which is set to debut this Friday. Meanwhile, twenty-eight Germantown HOSA members recently attended the largest HOSA conference ever, and they received the HOSA Cup for standard excellence. Despite the rainy weather, spring sports athletes are thriving. The softball team boasts a four-and-o record. The golf team broke the school record, and the girls' soccer team is off to a strong start with several impressive victories. Notably, the girls' track and field team clinched a victory at the Germantown Invite last Thursday. And just this past weekend, the power team won nationals, both boys and girls combined. So keep up the excellence, GHS. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It's always fantastic to hear the goings-on around the districts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Great job. You too.
Mr. Eisenbach, you missed the opportunity of putting a video up on the screen for us of the pie in the face.
I don't want to relive it.
No?
Come on.
I think there might be video somewhere. Item C, Kennedy Middle School presentation. Ms. Guerin and team. It appears you brought many with.
I did, yeah. I like to travel with the group. All right, so my name is Jessica Guerin. I'm the principal of Kennedy Middle School, as you know, and I've had the opportunity to bring two super awesome groups. So I've brought a class that we, an elective course, our tech ed celebration, and our FBLA Future Business Leaders of America celebration, which we just talked about high school, so now we'll get to brag about our program as well. So we're going to start with Mr. Philkey is going to present something about techno- technology, technology education.
Hi, I'm sure everybody knows who I am, so. Each year, I offer an opportunity for my manufacturing and plastics students to enter the Wonders of Plastics Essay Competition. It's a statewide competition for middle school and high school. It's on their own. They come down to the lab, work on it when they can for about three months. They work on this. We have some assistance from literacy teachers to review their papers when they're done, and then I have Mr. Castell in the library to help us with footnotes to make sure everything is perfect on that. For the thirteenth year in a row, I'm happy to say that we swept the competition first and second again. They give the top two. I brought my two students here behind me. I don't, so they've put in all the work, and the judges felt that their papers were the best about plastics, et cetera, which is sponsored by Society of Plastic Engineers, which is probably the biggest supporter of our plastics program at the middle school on that. Do you guys want anything to say? My first place and second place. Oh, I should mention they've got cash prizes for their places. Second place, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. First place, two hundred and fifty dollars cash for their work. So it's one of the few times that they can do schoolwork and get paid for it, I guess. Do you guys have anything to say?
No, I would just like to thank Mr. Philkey for like giving me the opportunity to do this. It was like, it was fun to do, and I got to do it for a prize.
Yeah, I would like to thank Mr. Philkey for giving me the opportunity. I'd also like to thank him for the opportunities he gives me in class every single other day. Yeah, I learn a lot every day in his class. He's a really good teacher. All right, thank you, guys.
All right.
I thought I'd take this opportunity to mention the Society of Plastics Engineers because they give so much to the program. Recently, I received a grant from them and was able to purchase a plastics grinding or recycling machine. And some people go, what do you need a recycling machine for in the tech ed program? Well, I thought I'd show you what we did with it. After I picked it up from Amazon, I had some of my students after spring break bring in milk jugs. And I had my sixth graders cut them up, and then I had some of my eighth graders actually grind them up into small particles. And I thought, well, what projects could we use this recycled material for? So we started first of all with using milk jug materials to make banks. And these didn't quite turn out as well as I wanted, so I think we've got to do a little bit more work on mixing maybe some other plastics or some powdered plastics with the milk jugs to get a smoother surface on that. So that was one project that we tried. A second one, which was a little bit better, was a football tee. One hundred percent milk jugs we used to do that, and a static casting project. And so that one, for sure, I think in the future would be perfect for using milk jugs, having the kids come in, talk about recycling, and here, make a project out of it. And so the one that was most impressive was, because it was under pressure, was, came out really smooth, was we do screwdriver sets. And so these just came out perfect using the polyethylene plastic, so nothing different would have to be done to this. And I think with the addition of either polyethylene or polypropylene powder, we could get a smooth surface like both of these are, and these also could be used as a project. So I just wanted to let you know that that recycling machine went to good work right away, and we're actually doing some prototype projects with that. Thank you.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you, Mr. Philkey, and congrats again on your first and second place win. That's really awesome. All right, now we have our FBLA, so I'll ask everybody who's here for FBLA to come on up, and I'll tell you a little bit about it. This was written by one of our advisors, Heather Yonkey, and our other advisor, Sarah Berlin. They couldn't be here today, so. On February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, Kennedy Middle School was proud to have nineteen of its FBLA members travel to Tullavista in Wisconsin Dallas to compete in the State of Wisconsin Middle School FBLA competition. FBLA, as you know, stands for Future Business Leaders of America, and you can see them behind me. Students prepared presentations and speeches centered around business concepts such as multimedia and website development, marketing of product, community service, business ethics, career research, critical thinking, exploring business issues. They performed in front of judges and against other middle schoolers from across the state. Throughout the conference, students had opportunities to participate in workshops and challenges with peers from different competing schools. Each student took a test on the topic of interest, such as financial literacy, business etiquette, digital citizenship, FBLA concepts, exploring computer science, learning strategies, and more. KMS had many students placed in the top five overall in their categories, again, too many to mention, and they were recognized with state awards. Overall, this is a fun, interactive experience for students to utilize many lifelong skills. We are so proud of their efforts and hard work in representing KMS and the Germantown School District so very well. So then we're on applause before we start doing our little presentation. They really are cool. I have, I've chaperoned this event before in other school districts, and it is a really cool event to see so many middle schoolers doing what they do. It really is inspiring and makes me proud. So we're going to start off with two of our sixth graders.
Hello, my name is Shashmika Kaviarisu, and I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Nandini Gandikota, and I'm in sixth grade.
Our category was business ethics, and Nandini was in my group. We had to make a slideshow to explain the impact of AI on the business world. We also had to dress up in our business attire.
The test I took was business etiquette, and Shashmika took leadership.
My favorite part had to be the workshop. It taught me how different elements make up a team. It's when people with different perspectives and viewpoints work together that a team is successful.
My favorite part was the presentation part. At first, I was a bit nervous, but as I went on, I worked with my group and gave my presentation to the jury. I liked FBLA because we got to know more about business and how the whole world operates. Do you guys have any questions?
Maybe.
I will say I'm impressed. I don't think I would be doing what you're doing in sixth grade. You guys are doing a great job. Keep up the good work. I think you're learning good skill sets for the future, and hopefully you're enjoying your time doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you open your presentation? Let's, can you tell what your name is and what part of the work category you are?
My name is Aria Saga. I did marketing mixed challenge with my twin brother over here.
You two are twins?
Yeah. And I also did exploring computer science for my test.
My name is Aria Saga. I did marketing mixed challenge with my twin brother, and I also did business etiquette for my test.
I'm Ella Peterson.
And I'm Madeline Quisenberry.
And then we did multimedia and website development, and I did leadership as a test.
Yeah, and I did business etiquette as a test.
My name is Aisha Chitiri, and I did business ethics with Shashmika and Nandini, and my test was business etiquette.
Okay, so we developed a website behind you on our smartboard for Old Germantown, which is a pizza place, which many of you are probably familiar with.
It ha- it has like many different elements. This is the, just the main page, so it shows a little bit of the history behind the restaurant, and then there's different folders that have the about us, the menu, the beverage menu, and then the newsletters and reviews.
On the bottom here, you can see we have, we put a map on the bottom, so if you are having trouble finding this place, there's also contact information and information about when they're open or closed.
Do you have any questions?
Did you guys know they won Business of the Year from Germantown, Old Germantown?
We live on like the list.
Yeah. Yeah, great job, and good idea, including the map and a picture of the wagon on it.
Yeah, I was going to say it's lucky that the, there's not a lot of traffic on that road because the first time my wife and I went, I believe I was backing up into the driveway. Yeah, so it's not that easy to find. Because it's so far back off of the road. The other, the other thing I'd like to mention is, as far as ethics is concerned, it's not just an interesting word. When I was in college to become an electrical engineer, I was told that perhaps my most important class that I would take was engineering ethics. And I can say, after being in the working world for many, many years, you will come across people that are ethical, and there are people that are unethical, and you have to decide which side of that fence you're going to work on. Obviously, I suggest the ethical side. So it's important. You don't, you won't necessarily see it in middle school, but certainly once you get out in the working world, you know, there's the right way to do things, and then there's the not-so-right way. So pay attention to your ethics. I'm really happy to hear that you were doing projects that related to ethics. It's very good, and I thank you for that.
Yep.
All right, well, do you have any other questions for us, Kennedy Crusaders?
Well, I just want to thank you for representing the school district so well. That's amazing to come out of that many teams, come in fourth place, and with the technical also. I mean, that's, it just shows, one, the support you guys have of the teachers, which is helpful, but for you to step up in such a huge role, I just give you credit. That is amazing, and want to thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Good night.
We'll go to item five, citizen comment. I believe we have none. Six consent agenda, consent agenda. Item A, approval of March eighteen, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the March eighteen, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion. Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. B, approval of teacher resignations. Mr. Noack's here with us. I think he's going to speak to some of this.
Thank you. We have three resignations to bring forward, and I'd like to expand on those a little bit. The first, Annette Ferosi, a seventh-grade language arts teacher at Kennedy Middle School, submitted her letter of resignation March eighth, twenty twenty-four, effective June seventh, twenty twenty-four. Annette was hired in August of two thousand twelve as a seventh-grade language arts teacher at Kennedy Middle School in the Germantown School District. In addition, she also taught ten years at the elementary level in the Milwaukee Public School District. I would note that Annette is retiring from education, although she doesn't meet the district retirement expectations. She is intending to retire from the profession. Next is Lorinda Durin, music teacher at Amy Bell. She submitted her letter of resignation April fourth, twenty twenty-four, effective June seventh, twenty twenty-four. Was hired in nineteen ninety-seven as a music teacher in the Germantown School District. She taught on a part-time basis for a total of twenty-two years, with the last nine years being at Amy Bell Elementary. with the last nine years being at Amy Bell Elementary School. Um again, Larinda is intending to retire from education as a part-time um teacher. She doesn't qualify for the district retirement benefit, but we recognize that she is um retiring from the profession. Finally, Karen Wenzel, kindergarten teacher at Amy Bell Elementary School submitted her letter of resignation on April eighth, twenty twenty four, effective June seventh, twenty twenty four. Karen taught at um Amy Bell Elementary School for the last six years. Prior to that, she taught for twenty years at County Line Elementary School. Her forty-four total years in education also includes eighteen years of teaching at Saint Killian's Catholic School in Hartford. Karen, I spoke with her today. Karen's intention is to retire from education. Uh she meets retirement qualifications in Germantown. There are benefits that she doesn't qualify for. I spoke with her about, with her about that. I've actually had many conversations with her. Um I really enjoy her. She's a very fun person to be around. Um she's very excited about retirement and we wish her the best of luck. This is unique in that while she qualifies for the district benefit, doesn't qualify for the district benefit, she technically qualifies for retirement. Uh it's forced us to look at this in a very unique way and to commit to in future months with Personnel Committee, look at language in our handbook relative to overall retirement. But I do wanna recognize um that she's uh contributed an awful lot to this district, um to multiple schools. Um and likewise, like I said, the conversations with her are always enjoyable and she's um contributed quite a bit um for all of us. So we wish her the best of luck. I'd ask that you approve all three of these rec- rec- resignations. And as we've talked about retirement, recognize um these are three individuals who've um uh meant an awful lot to this district in different ways and um recognize them for that and wish them the best.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resignations of Annette Ferosi, Larinda Durin and Karen Wenzel. Thank them for their service to the students, their families and the Germantown School District.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of the teachers for their service and particularly Karen Wenzel. Um all four of my students, I believe, had Karen Wenzel in at County Line School. And um I also taught uh JA at County Line. And I, I can't forget uh Karen Wenzel's class. I believe she was teaching first grade at the time. And, and there's a big difference between uh first grade and fifth grade. So in, in first grade, all the students were all huddled around right in front of me and sitting on the floor and, and just waiting for every word that I said in, in, so that was Karen's class. And she, she was a very good teacher too and she was happy that I was there and of course I talked about uh electrical engineering, not just JA stuff. So there's no telling how many engineers I, I made over the years as a, as a result of that. But anyway, just uh kind of unrelated to this, but fifth grade, the students are all in their, their desks and some of them are not paying any attention at all to what I was saying. So anyway, needless to say, Karen Wenzel's uh class is most memorable for me, uh first graders. It's really, really fun to do and I recommend uh teaching JA if you get a chance.
I can't pass up this opportunity to ask for the viewers at home, what does JA stand for?
Junior Achievement.
We're all waiting.
Wow. I, I, I've fallen into the trap. Public school acronyms. Thank you.
That was fantastic.
I hate it when that happens.
Agreed with Mr. Noack's statement. Uh while we recognize, we have to officially recognize these resignations, I think uh ceremony, we recognize them as retirement. We wish them well in that process. I similarly went through a uh similar process myself in my career. And so I understand that transition period there, um while it might not be a full um retirement, I guess. We will honor it as such because it's well deserved, so. Uh any further discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item C, approval of teacher contracts.
We have no contracts this evening?
We have none. Uh D, approval of donations.
We have seven donations this evening. It would not be a board meeting without our generous donors from our community. Um we have an anonymous donor of two hundred and fifty dollars to the GHS Cabaret Event, Choir Cabaret Event. Bandero County Wood Grill also donated two hundred and fifty dollars to GHS Choir Cabaret Event. Um as well as dental professionals donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the GHS Choir Cabaret Event. GNK Enterprises Pet Supply Plus donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the choir program. Roberts Frozen Custard, three hundred and fifteen dollars to our deaf, hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind um fundraising event. MacArthur PT has two donations this evening, the first being for fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for four smart TVs for first grade classrooms and two thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for play tickets and bussings for grades three, four and five field trips this sh- this spring.
It's amazing. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to thank the donors for their generosity and prove the donations as listed.
Second. Mr. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any further discussion?
That uh cabaret event was in, in support of the uh choir and I believe all board members were invited to it. But another way for everyone to support um the PAC Performing Arts Center is uh through attending, you know, the events. So uh this was a reminder to me, I ordered my tickets for my wife and I last evening to the uh Hunchback of Notre Dame for, I believe it's next Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
Yeah, this coming Saturday. So this next weekend, uh r- really the, the donations are great and thank everyone for that, but you can also kind of donate by going and seeing displays also.
Fantastic. Any other comments? I would say this is probably one of my favorite parts of the meeting. Every month it uh just surprises me how much money is donated into this district by a lot of us, a hard-working group of people. So we much appreciate and uh the students and staff, I'm sure, do as well. Much appreciate the uh, the efforts in this. Any other further discussion on that? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item seven, finance committee update. Mr. Loth?
Yes, the uh finance committee met on uh April eighth. And we approved uh March vouchers. Uh Brittany asked, answered a few questions for us. And then uh we come to uh full board item seven B. It's the uh Village of Germantown TID extension. I'll just read the background here that was given uh in finance that evening. On April eighth, twenty twenty four, the Village of Germantown's Joint Review Board will meet to discuss possible amendments of TID seven and eight. Steve Creklow from the Village of Germantown will be presenting information regarding tax incremental district TID properties seven and eight and the recommended amendments. The finance committee will discuss the proposal and make a recommended, recommendation to the full board. So what this uh amounts to is uh TIDs seven and eight um being expanded and uh being on the books for two more years. So the, that means the school district will not receive tax revenue from those districts for two additional years. Personally, I wish the village would stop doing TIDs altogether, but these TIDs are already on the books. And uh two years is uh, while two years is two years, it's i- in the, in the big picture of things uh for a twenty-year TID or so, it's not that big of a deal. So I intend on supporting this and I'm willing to make a motion to the board for further discussion. Um I will move to accept the amendments to the TID properties seven and eight as presented by Steve Creklow from the Village of Germantown on April eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second. Mr. Loth with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. I'm assuming there's some further discussion?
Uh for myself, I had kinda gone into that evening with the intention on voting no. However, uh while the TIDs are being expanded, there will also be some development with uh tax-paying businesses where the taxes will come to Germantown School District immediately. So it's kind of an overall, uh you know, it's a, a win for the village and I guess it's a win for the school district also. So I'll, I will be voting yes for it.
I, I was originally thinking though, when this was presented to committee, um the, the taxpayers in the, the village as well as the school district could use the relief with that TID closing early. Uh but I think we owe it to be good partners with our friends at the village, so I, I will support this.
I was in a similar position with Mr. Loth. I too was not thrilled with moving forward with this. However, uh the fact that there, there is that opportunity for uh development to occur where we could see more immediate revenue um is, is kind of where, where I landed as far as uh my support for this, this evening.
Are you saying without the TID, you don't think the development would take place? This is not blighted property. Germantown residents have already seen an eighty-three percent increase in water. How many times do you go back to the taxpayer for this? These are, they're beautiful properties that on their own, I think would merit company investment. TIDs are usually set aside for if there is a brownfield there, maybe an old agricultural dump, that property's going unused. The community pitches in to clean up the site so it can be a useful uh opportunity to get a business in there. I don't believe any of these properties are that way.
You are correct. That is not the case. So, um with that thought in mind, uh i- if this was a proposal for a new TID, I think I'd be adamantly against it. I don't think this village needs that um to um expand itself and spur development quite as aggressively as it's been used. Um that being said, these are existing TIDs. They're looking for an extension uh not on the, the end date, but um the premature close date. So they're, they're already positioned to close early. They would like to push that early close back. Um initially, I would be against that. When I heard that the, the proposal was to spur development exterior to the TID, which would potentially bring us a taxation sooner than when the TID would close, even at its earliest date. I think we have to look at it from a district financially, which way um would, would benefit the district at that point. Now that we have these TIDs in our hand that we have to manage or assist, uh provide a vote, I guess would be the best way. Well, I'm pretty much lockstep on that as far as what these TIDs are being used for. I mean, this is gorgeous land. This isn't blighted land. But if it does, if we punt the TID closure by a couple of years to spur growth outside of the TID that this district can take advantage of and see some financial relief earlier, under that logic, I think I'm a little closer to in support of it.
Do you have an idea what the growth outside the TID district is and if it'd be beneficial to the school district?
Well, that would be the question we levied with uh the village. So
I don't think we got an answer on that.
Yeah, so the, I think the, the answer on that is, and it's the same as when they propose a TID, uh there's a bit of a, this is the possibilities and we hope that this spurns that, right? It's, it's uh an investment in that manner. Like I said, if this was a new TID proposal to, to sink dollars or pull dollars out um now into the future, um I would be a little more cautious if we're looking at possibly extending the closure date by two years, I believe is what it was.
It's two years.
To, to, to take that, ultimately what comes into is a gamble and does that exterior development come? I'm a little more comfortable that. I don't necessarily agree with the overall philosophy of it, but we're at a point where we have to manage w- what the village and prior board actions have.
I think the village has other opportunities to fund this instead of going right to taxpayers.
Sure.
So I, I don't think by being responsible to, in the school district and all this benefits the kids upfront, by delaying revenues for two years trumps possible development that we don't even understand at this point. So I'm, I'm still a no on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned, you know, the area's not blighted and I agree with that, but doesn't this um amendment and the proposed development allow them to extend water and sewer into other areas and they think that's what's gonna spur some of the development?
Yeah.
Well, we, they're spurring it over to Richfield also, for which Richfield is stepping forward and paying a lot of that cost too. So my question is, why do we keep folding more money into an existing TID and putting it back on the, taxpayers are really on the school district to defer revenue coming in?
And I think also without a plan as to what they want to do with the, the extension, like what are you? We did not get that answer and I think making a decision based on unknowns.
They, they can't provide that answer now because it would be up to developments, developers to see what, what occurs there and then make those proposals in.
Well, and the trend that is going towards multi-family units, whether it's apartments, whether it's multi-family units, and that's what we're gonna be putting in, that affects our school district, that affects, you know, fire police, that affects the community. And I think, you know, and to Eric's point, in delaying tax, you know, taxes that would also benefit our school district, I think it would almost be irresponsible for us as a school board that's supposed to be doing what's to benefit the, the school district and keeping that strong and delaying income that we could possibly have for something that we don't know, I think is somewhat irresponsible. So I am a no.
And I, and I fully understand where you're both coming from. The entire TID process is based off of, I don't know. The village assumes development will be spurned by opening a TID, right? That, that, that technically is what occurs there. Um so at this point, we're asking to take that same assumption that initially made two financially successful TIDs or currently financially successful TIDs. And once again, I'll reiterate, if they were proposing a brand-new TID, I would be adamantly against it. So now, how do we manage the one we have to the best offset for this district? Is it wait the final ten years to be, to, to fulfill the TID? Or wait twelve years and potentially score, spurn growth exterior to that TID, leading well before that twelve-year mark? It's not a clean answer. This is a legitimate question.
No, and I get it, but you're predating that on the success of the TID. And that's really what TIDs were originally designed for is you take a property like North Ridge Mall and nobody's gonna take on that responsibility. So the community steps forward and says, like, we're tired of this eyesore, we're not getting proper taxes on it. We, the community, will step in and help finance a developer.
Sure.
Okay. These properties are not that case. So I, I, I think those properties pretty much would have been successful. We would have seen tax revenue earlier than waiting till, whether they move it to twenty thirty-six or so.
It's two, it was a two-year punt.
But they're moving it further down.
You're using the example of North, North Ridge to spur, these are already established. So there's, there's a bit of a sunk
And that's, that's why I say that's, that's to Russ's point. So I, I do get that. I'm a little disappointed that there's a trend in the industry starting in about two thousand five and, and culminating in two thousand fifteen, dealing with, you know, banks aren't loaning money. So developers went, well, let's go for the easy money. Let's see if the municipality's gonna step forward. Again, if you're improving property to encourage growth in tax revenue, I get it. But if a developer is just saying, let's float this balloon up there, not on the back of taxpayers. And so I hear that it, what this came about in two thousand seventeen, before I was here, before most of us were on the board. Are we setting a precedent to say, oh, well, we opened a TIF. Are we setting a precedent to say, oh, well, we opened a TIF, keep, keep throwing things on there? And back when I was campaigning, this was a campaign question. And I said, I can make an argument for TIFs and tids or against them. The danger to a school district is, once you open it up, what are the ancillary costs that keep coming? This is a pretty safe one because it's not entertainment district and, you know, restaurant isn't gonna fail or anything. Uh, we're then, we're on the hook to keep, you know, keep the roads plugged to something that's not being used. And that's my, that's my North Ridge example. So I think this is a very safe one, but from a precedent standpoint, from a ethics standpoint, no, it's, I'm still a no.
I did question Steve Krecklaw, why we're using tids to develop, uh, greenfield projects. That's not what they were originally meant for. And we've sent Brittany at least once to vote no. I, I, it might be more than once, but I don't wanna stretch it. Uh, we've centered the vote no on, on the latest tid. And, um, the trouble is we only get one vote. Uh, we probably have the most to lose, uh, but there's other groups, including M A T C, I believe, Milwaukee Area Technical College. They get one vote also, but their, uh, responsibility is nothing compared to what our district is. So I, I agree with everything you're saying. I just, uh, I went into that evening with a no and I, I, I'm just saying I came out with a yes. And I believe as, as far as for the uses, uh, Kim, I believe it's all, uh, industrial and commercial, uh, commercial not being, uh, multi-family housing.
But that's for.
So that.
Right.
Sorry, if I jumped on you. That's for internal, internal to the tid. So the external developments could be anything. We don't know what they are. They could be residential. It could be, uh, large multi-family. And we've seen that being proposed to the village. We haven't seen that being approved by the village at this time. Uh, I don't know how long they hold off on that. At some point, I think some of this residential development will be with some form of multi-family buffer because that's what we see in the twenty fifty plan and that's what we see coming from the village in conversation. If you, if you asked me to, to bet on it, I would think there's some industrial probably to the south and to the north is probably residential build. Would, would be the logic that I could see there, but I'm not a developer.
And, and that's the question, like, said, will this be developed irregardless? And if it will be, and if we believe that it will be, then why are we as taxpayers taking on that hit when a developer has the ability to also?
So the, the question there is, do, do we allow them to extend the tid for two years while still prematurely closing it to spur, uh, um, I believe it's sewer to the south and the north outside of the tid? So the, the sewer being spurred to, to Richfield, that was a referendum that the village voted for and the village wanted. So now they're asking, can we use the, while they're in there doing that, can we take some out of the tid to extend that out into areas that are not covered by the tid that would result in taxation if the development come? To your point, we don't know what that development is or if it comes. Does that come sooner or later based on if that sewer water is there? It's probably supercharged by the sewer water being there because then there's the benefits to it versus the industrial. The developers coming in and having to bear that cost. That's the question.
Question is if we do, if, if we say no and there's enough votes on, to Mike's point, Mr. Loth's point, to block it, what was their plan B for financing this?
As a project, I don't think the project goes through. There isn't one. That's, they're, they're.
Well, that, those are, those are two different things. The project doesn't go through or there isn't one. If it doesn't go through, that's maybe poor planning. I, I, I don't see.
Well, how do they pay for it? How, they're, they're asking the.
They can issue general obligation bonds or there's, there's several ways. I never heard an alternative other than we're gonna come to the taxpayers one more time and say, we need this.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's where I stand.
I appreciate it.
tangentially to this discussion, I think it's highlighting the fact that we do need the press to have discussions with the village because to your point, with regards to what they do from a residential housing standpoint, we have a lot as far as what to, to say regarding that, whether it's multi-family, single homes. You know, we have those type of things as far as the population within our schools and how we manage that, so.
Well, because if they do multi-families and now we're looking at schools that are potentially, you know, they're getting older, they're gonna need work. Now we don't have the room for students. Where do we build? Where we do? We have to answer these questions before we say, yeah, go ahead and, you know, and potentially hit the district hard. And we, we have no response to that. And now we're going to taxpayers again for a referendum to, you know, find money to start building and expanding. So I just think as a school district, that is our responsibility, is the school district. It's not the village. It's not to, it's our, to the, to the students already in this district and to keep our, our schools strong. And so when you have a, a huge unknown that will impact both our, our school district and the taxpayers, that's our responsibility. Not to make sure a developer is able to come in and develop land. That is, you know.
And on top of that, you're already talking about other tids. Why? Why are we all going right to tids right away? Is Germantown not a desirable area that developers went building? They get financing all the time. Why is it, why, why are we so adamant about always doing it through tids?
Who's talking about, I'm not saying.
I, I thought I heard you say, you know, tid's coming up or.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I apologize.
I, I mentioned, I mentioned if this was.
You guys are making a great argument from my point of having to force these meetings with the village.
Well, and that, that's what I was gonna go, definitely was the time, but I thought I heard someone say that.
I think, I think there is some conversations, um, for a seat at the table that may or may not be going on. We'll see if that bears fruit. I, hopefully it does, uh, for these types of things. I think a matter of this, I'm gonna call the question and ask for roll call vote.
Menden?
No.
Ewer?
No.
Barney, I'm a yes. Loth?
Yes.
Pollack?
Yes.
Piggabotham?
No.
Brown?
No.
All right. Motion fails.
The point, do we need a second motion to give you a vote or you know where to go with that, I would assume, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion on that. Uh, Mr. Loth? Item C?
Yep, there's a few more items. Uh, full board item, full board item seven C, um, is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meal and milk prices. The meals, cost of meals is not going up at all, but the food and nutrition department did see milk costs go up over last year, uh, by six cents. And they requested an increase in milk from forty cents to fifty cents, uh, per half pint, I believe it is. So the recommendation is motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meal and milk prices.
It comes forward as a positive recommendation. It does not need a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Okay, and, uh, last item is full board item seven D, as in David. And, uh, the background there is our current M S A S A N. And that is storage network attached, or storage attached network is at the end of life and is in need of replacing. This unit is used to store all of our files and server data. It is on a current five-year cycle replacement plan. The recommendation is motion to approve with a positive recommendation to the Board of Education to purchase a H E P M S A S A N storage for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents from Vanguard as the winning bid for the R F P.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation? Uh, a lot of letters in there.
Don't ask.
Oh, now we go. Here we go. No, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Loth. Moving on to item eight, teaching and learning. Uh, we will move, uh, we met April eighth and we will move on to item B, approval of Wonder reading, Wonders reading curriculum. Mr. Mizniak, I believe you have some guests for us on this.
I do have some very special guests this evening, tonight. Uh, Ms. Ellie Wondry and Ms. Gail Growth are here. They are two teachers who have been with me since the beginning of the reading review. So they were both on, um, the team that determined what we would pilot in Germantown. And then they're both teachers who've piloted Wonders materials in their classroom. Uh, I brought them here for you tonight so that they could share their experience, um, teaching with Wonders in the classroom and then, then to share a little bit about their students' experiences using the Wonders materials.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for me to be able to speak with you this evening. Before I begin, I just wanted to let you know that my partner in crime, my, my fellow third grade teacher, Tammy Keesley, was supposed to be here this evening. Unfortunately, she is ill today and she was unable to make it. So I hope that my words are the same words that she would also convey to you tonight. As Jake just mentioned, I was looking back at my emails from, uh, the past year and a half. Our first meeting officially was on October sixth, twenty twenty-two. And in many ways, it seems like a lifetime ago, but for us pilot teachers, I think our year has gone by in a flash. And Tammy and I both randomly chose Wonders as one of the curriculums that we would like to pilot this year. And we were very fortunate to have a wonderful, meaningful experience with our students. I just wanted to share with you a, a few highlights of how I think Wonders is going to impact our students both, um, from a teacher's fan standpoint as well as from a student's standpoint in a positive way. One of the things that I think Wonders does a fantastic job in is giving students and teachers a multitude of materials and resources, um, for both the classroom students as well as for us as teachers. We are going to have for the first time in a long time, consistent resources that we will be able to have our students use no matter what school they are at. So a third grader at Amy Bell will have the same option or the same opportunities and the same resources as third graders in, um, the other schools in our district. Another highlight I think of Wonders is that it exposes our students to high-quality literature. Every day, my students are reading nonfiction texts, uh, fiction texts. Many of them are high-interest texts that kids love to read. They really look forward to reading the anthology books. They're interested in reading our small group books that, um, I do on a daily basis with my students. One of the other things that's nice about the high quality of texts is that it also supplements our reading or our science as well as our social studies curriculum. So we as teachers are always trying to make the most out of our time. And I think having the, um, science and social studies components at times really helps us out. Differentiation. I can do some differentiation with my students every day using the Wonders resources. Whether it be small group instruction, um, I meet with two groups a day or two groups each day for Wonders, uh, small group instruction. I'm also able to have my students individually work on, um, adaptive learning, which takes their learning from where they're at and it makes progression at their own level. So it really, um, helps each student every single day make the most of their learning time. Finally, we're going to be able to have some good built-in assessments. This is something too that we have really been struggling with as teachers, finding common assessments where we can use those assessments and help our students grow. And with the placement tests that Wonders offers, with the progress monitoring that I'm able to do with my students every two weeks, as well as fluency checks, which Tammy and I actually spoke to the board about earlier in the year as part of our S L O. We're really looking forward to having some common assessments, um, throughout the district. I wanna thank Jake. Um, Jake did a great job keeping our large commu, our, our large committee on pace for the last year and a half. And one thing that stood out to me, and he said it at the very beginning, but he also said it throughout the process. He said, I am not going to be the person who makes the selection for this reading curriculum. The selection is going to come from you. And for us as educators, as experts with our kids, we really appreciate the fact that you allowed us to have a voice in that. We had some fantastic conversations throughout the last year and a half. And I feel really confident with the choice that, that we selected that we're bringing to you tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hello, good evening. I am Gail Growth, first grade teacher. Um, you can see behind you a little bit, um, there are some of my students engaged in the practice of Wonders. So I just wanna share a little bit about my experience with Wonders. These are photos I took last week of my first grade students engaged in some of the different activities. The photos include activities that students are engaged in every day, including phonics practice, partner reading, fluency practice, student journaling. I found the phonics scope and sequence to be much more rigorous than what we previously had been using. This along with the fact that everything we read throughout the week focuses around the new phonics patterns, high-frequency words and vocabulary, provides the students the practice they need to become successful readers. Throughout the week, students build knowledge around an essential question. Using text evidence, students are able to respond verbally and through written responses to what they have read across a variety of genres. We just started this week a new unit on insects, which focuses on four different phonics patterns for the long I sound. Wonders provides text for shared reading, a weekly interactive read aloud, and many options for differentiated instruction for the student, which includes poems, decodable readers, high-frequency readers, differentiated genre passages, and differentiated books. Every option provides students with additional phonics and fluency practice and works to build their background knowledge around the essential question. This is just some of it from this week that we have, the students have available, that I have available to be using. Yeah, this is just a small portion of it. There's so much available to us in Wonders. Throughout the year, we have engaged in many different topics. Unit one focused on school and families. Unit two focused on our community, including different jobs, buildings, and using maps. Unit three addressed the question on how things change over time, including measuring time, comparing life now to then, learning how plants grow and change, and the different ways that we get our food. Unit four focused on animals, including how they are different, how their different body, how they use their different body parts, how animals survive in nature, how people and animals work together, and what we're working on now, all about insects. Unit five is about making sense of the world by categorizing and observing. I've enjoyed learning new things with the students this year. For example, you may have known that cows drink a lot of water, but did you know that the, it's equivalent of us drinking five hundred glasses a day? And last week, we read about an alligator, that alligators only need to eat one meal a year if that's a large meal. For me, this gave a little comfort. My daughter goes to school in Florida, takes field trips to the Everglades, walks through the Everglade swamps in regular street clothes. So I was kind of relieved to hear that they only have to maybe eat once a year. So thank you for considering Wonders as our new reading curriculum. It'll be nice to have a consistent and complete program in the Germantown School District. I think as Ellie said, you heard a lot of the same things, the differentiation. Uh, my end first grade, it's really important, those phonics skills and the whole ability of teaching our students how to read. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizniak, anything to?
I.
He's out of updates.
Yeah, I'm out of.
You've actually, you've reached your allotted amount.
Uh, I, I, I told you last time that I presented a very brief overview of all the strengths of. I told you last time, I presented a very brief overview of all the strengths of Wonder's, and I don't think I could do a better job than what Ellie and Gail did tonight in highlighting the strengths of this program and how our teachers came to the understanding of this being the resource we'd like to move forward with for the Germantown School District.
Fantastic. Well, I want to say thank you to the team, thank you to the staff that were clearly, wholeheartedly involved in it and dedicated to the process. I think Dr. Reuter, Mr. Mizniak brought forward a process we can replicate throughout, and we continue to perfect it as we go here. I don't attempt to top the impact that I think we just saw this is going to have for our district. I will say, the committee was committed to making sure those voices were heard through the whole process, and I hope that was understood, and it sounds like it was. We have received some pressures based off of state actions, and our initial was to have faith in our process and trust our staff in the direction we were headed with this. So with that, I want to bring forward a recommendation on Wonder's. It sounds like Saltendorf asked for a little bit of a amendment here to the positive recommendation. So I'm going to read the positive recommendation for the committee, and then I will add an amendment to it. So, coming forward with motion of positive recommendation for Teaching and Learning Committee to approve the Wonder's curriculum and the six-year agreement for the amount not to exceed $398,572.44 using ESER funds. The approval of the Wonder's curriculum shall include the components essential to meeting the Wisconsin ELA standards and exclude standalone SEL lessons until SEL review is conducted to determine the lesson's utility and alignment. That comes forward with a positive recommendation. I will look to add a friendly amendment to it in the following, and we'll take a vote on the amendment. It will require a second. So, motion to approve the Wonder's curriculum and the six-year agreement for the amount not to exceed $398,520, $398,572.44 using, and this is where the edit comes in, designated fund balance and ESER funds. The approval of the Wonder's curriculum shall include components essential with meeting the Wisconsin ELA standards and exclude standalone SEL lessons until SEL review is conducted to determine the lesson's utility and alignment. Second. I came with the motion. Mr. Barney with the second there. Any discussion on amending the original positive recommendation?
I think it's just that it's not going to be all ESER funds, that's what I heard.
Correct. ESER only allows us to do K3. So, and we do have designated money and fund balance for curriculum, so we were going to portion it out.
Okay.
We just had to make sure the motion said both of them.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The amendment is made. I believe I get to read this again. The amended motion. It will take a vote on the amended motion that now reads, motion to approve the Wonder's curriculum and six-year agreement, the amount not to exceed $398,572.44 using designated fund balance and ESER funds. The approval of the Wonder's curriculum shall include all components essential to meeting Wisconsin ELA standards and exclude standalone SEL lesson until SEL review is conducted to determine the lesson's utility and alignment. Second.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Kim. She put a bunch of work into this one.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Mr. Ewer with the motion, seeing both with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to our new reading curriculum. Thank you all for your work.
I would also just like to say thank you to all the teachers and everybody involved. Obviously, this is a, you know, large sum of money that we are dedicating to this, where we could have, you know, we're not having the funds come from elsewhere. This is all internal. So your guys' work and your feedback tonight, it makes me feel really excited about, you know, moving forward with this curriculum. Because we got all of the updates, but to hear you come tonight and just kind of like break it down, and I know some of the things that I look forward to with the assessment, so that we can keep on top of this, especially because, you know, we do see a lag in learning from, you know, the last years. So moving forward, knowing that we're going to keep up to date and, you know, and not only just keeping the kids from, that are behind, but keeping them motivated because other kids are, you know, have, are obviously more advanced, and they get bored. So being able to keep them challenged while, you know, building the skills of all of the students, I think that that is really important. So thank you for all the time that you put in. And I'm sure it's frustrating learning a new curriculum, but I'm very excited to move forward and continue to hear how our students are doing. So thank you.
Awesome. Great work, everybody. That is it for teaching and learning. Unfortunately, you get me for the following. Item nine, Personnel Committee. This involves three positive recommendations that are going to come forward. First is going to be the approval of Compensation Model Plan. Much like the reading review, this time, Dr. Reuter and Mr. Noack took the lead after the board asked for a comprehensive review be done regarding our compensation model for staff. They definitely ensured staff voice was heard in it. They took a multifaceted approach to examine what was going on around us with surrounding districts, and then balanced it with our financial obligations. I firmly believe what is going to be brought forward here tonight, kind of take teams on all of that. It echoes some of the requests and desires of the staff that were brought forward through the process. It begins to put us in a place to be competitive with surrounding districts. It also balances some of our other financial obligations, which is very important, as we discussed earlier, with some of the decisions we're being put under these days. So, I'll give a slight overview of the total compensation. Understand, this was a study that took place over the last year. It was not a fly-by-night operation. But the big hits are annual starting salary will increase from $40,000 to $47,500. With that, staff that would have been leapfrogged by that are being brought up to that $47,500. Is, I'd like to note that it's an unobligated, undigneted investment totality of this package that the board's looking to bring forward, or the committee's looking to bring forward to the board. So we have longevity incentives, five years, $1,500, ten years, $1,500, fifteen years, $1,750, twenty years, $2,500, twenty-five years, $2,500, and thirty years, $2,500. Continuing education, master's degree in the field of discipline will be $6,000. There was some discussions around this. There may be some staff currently pursuing masters that might not quite fit this, and it was encouraged to reach out, I believe, to Mr. Noack and Mr. Mizniak's office in regards to ensuring we can compensate that. I think that's the other big note. We didn't want to deter from what certain staff were already receiving, but when it comes to longevity pay, we wanted to increase some of the lower end of that and not take away from the top end as well. So that was another big hurdle we had to jump with this. National Board Certification, a $1,500 stipend. Certification Stipends, Reading Specialists 500, SLP License 750, ELL License 750, Interpreter License 750, CAP 750, Career and Technical Education Linked to DPI Certifications 500, Alternative Education License 750. Overload Compensation, this was one we heard, and it appears, is appear, but they're looking to enhance that to a $3,000 benefit. I think that was one of the themes we heard in some of our staff review. Personal Day Payout, this is a little nuanced, but it'll be $100 for unused personal days if the employee chooses not to convert. So they have an option, they can convert it to their sick bank or receive $100 payout for each unused day. With that, is there any, anything I'm missing there, Mr. Noack?
I just appreciate the, everyone that participated. We had a couple of our presenters for the reading pilot. We're participants in our comp study as well. So if you'd like to take the mic again. I think we heard, as you saw in the transcripts of all of our different groups that we listened to and took notes on, there were a lot of great ideas. And as Mike and I shared a couple of weeks ago, this is a start. We want to continually come back and review this. The commitment we're asking tonight is $159,000 commitment to improve our current model. To your point, Mr. Ewer, to become competitive with our surrounding districts and compensate our teachers at the level they should be compensated at. So this isn't by any means something, well, we did it this year, and it's going to sit on a folder for the next 20 years, and then we come back to it. We want to continue to stay competitive, but also stay fiscally sound to know that we're not making it to change, and in two years, we have to pull the carpet out from underneath because we can't sustain. So there are a lot of other ideas that were on the table, but this is what we can make work moving forward for the short term, and then we can look back at those other ideas and reconvene with staff in years to come.
I think exactly to that point. There's some ideas that were left on the table, but it means they're not off the table. We're looking to find, and I think Mr. Pollak said in some of our discussions, the opportunities, take advantage of some opportunities, potentially create some opportunities to reinvest and continue to enhance this. So by all means, it's not a last step. It's a first step, and we'll continue to revisit this. I have all faith in that. Any questions before? This time, I bring forward a motion to move forward with a positive recommendation for the full board to approve a proposal of Germantown Teaching Compensation Plan as presented. That is a positive recommendation. It needs no second. Assuming there's no further discussion on it. If there isn't, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item C, Approval of OPEB Plan. This came about from board concerns regarding unfunded liabilities. And OPEB is in regards to some post-retirement insurance benefits we offer our retirees. The model we were using or are using right now has become outdated. Many districts have made this change many years ago, shortly after the change in Act 10. Mr. Loeb's kind of spearheaded this with the concern. I know when I first became on the board, I was not aware of it, but it's alarming when you hear the amount of dollars that was unfunded liability. The concerns at that point, then, are how do we look to change the benefit? That it is going to be a change, but can we honor some of the commitments that we made to some of our staff? So we're going to bring forward, we presented a couple of different options. Once again, this was another process where we surveyed what surrounding districts were. We brought in third-party subject-matter experts on it to present to us logical processes behind it. That was, once again, led by Mr. Noack and Dr. Reuter.
And Ms. Altendorf.
Ms. Altendorf, yes. She makes her, spend money wisely.
Someone had to say no.
We won't put it all. So I'll just go over, option A, kind of with the very rough outline of that. Looks like it is in the packet. It was fully discussed, and I would highly recommend, if you want to see all the data, it's transparent. It's in the packet. Go back, look at all the information that we took a look at in regards to being advised on this decision. So staff retiring prior to 7/1/29, see no change in their benefits. So the five-year window, we are not, this was an important thing specifically for me, that we didn't pull the rug out from somebody near retirement. Unfortunately, we do have to put a year on it, and five seem to be the logical number. So following that, the second tier staff retiring between 7/1 of 29 and 8/30 of 29 will shift to an HRA contribution model. This looks, and you'll see it in the packet, teachers' monthly contribution, $1,100, $1,285 for administrators. It'll be an annual $13,200 for the teachers and $15,400 for administration. The third-tier staff retiring after 6/30 of 2039 will see, receive a HRA contribution of the following. Teachers, $3,000, $3,000 a year with a maximum of $90,000. Administrators, $4,000 a year with a maximum of $120,000. I believe our outside presenter, that $3,000 mark was considerably more than some of our peer districts. Mr. Noack, was that?
More.
I think it was, I think the report was typically two. So we are trying to.
I paused because there's variance.
There's a lot to it, but it boiled down to roughly two to three. So we felt like that was a competitive offer, which allows us to continue offering something for incoming staff as we move forward. Any questions or discussions? Did I miss anything? These are some bigger topics that this committee has handled.
I believe Linda from Key Benefits had mentioned that it was $1,000 is the average benefit.
Okay, so it was $1,000.
Yeah, I heard your point was it was generous in comparison to this region.
For the record, I want to clarify the dates for Tier Two, because I think you read one incorrectly. It was 7/1 of 29 through 6/30 of 20, excuse me, 6/30 of 2039.
39, I said 20. My notes are incorrect. You're 39, correct.
7/1 of 2029 until 6/30 of 2039.
39, yes. Thank you for that. Dates have been a fun one on this. I think by no means is it perfect, but I do believe this is going to help the district mitigate some risks that are, not some, a lot of risks that we were exposed to going forward. And I'm going to go back to Mr. Pollak's comments. This does potentially create some opportunity for us to take advantage of in other areas when we look at benefits moving forward. This is a long-term, I mean, financial costs, which is worth savings, but it's far more predictable to manage this for Brittany's office in understanding where, what our liability is and to pre-fund that liability as continuing healthcare costs bloom out of control, for lack of a better. I think that's everything, unless anybody else has got a stat there. Thank you. So at this time, I'll bring forward a motion to move forward with a positive recommendation of full board to approve of proposed option A, the attached Germantown School District Post-Employment Benefit Options. Positive recommendation, it does not need a second. Any last discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. I promise you, I'm almost done. Mr. Noack will help me walk maybe a little bit through this last one. So we have the approval of the 24-25 Staffing Plan. This was presented at the last meeting. So at this time, or what was presented to us at this time, the 24-school-year calls for an employ, 24-25 school-year calls for an employment of 269 full-time teachers and up to 18 part-time teachers for an overall FTE of 278.676, sorry. Overall, the post-staffing calls for a reduction of 4.29 FTEs spread evenly through the district. This includes three FTEs at the elementary level and 2.7 FTEs at the high school. Primary rationale that was presented of FTEs for 24 through 25 school year directly correlates with the projected change in enrollment and modifications to class size as the result of the class-size policy. With all that being said, I think, I tend to look at this proposal much like some of the finance, where it's a snapshot in time. This could change depending on enrollment, increasing or decreasing, and can always be brought back at that time. So at this time, I'll bring forward a motion for the full board with a positive recommendation to approve the Staffing Plan 2024-25 School Year and issue 269 regular full-time teaching contracts. Positive recommendation, doesn't require a second. Any discussion? It will remind everyone, the packet does include a lot of the data that was presented at that time in regards to the conclusion. Mr. Noack and Dr. Reuter have come and. in regards to the conclusion Mr. Nowak, Dr. Reuter have come and proposed to us. So no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Move on, Item Ten, New Business Discussion and Action, Approve Administrator Contract. Amy Bell Principal, Mr. Doctor, sorry, Reuter.
All right. This evening, prior to the board meeting, US Board were able to speak with the finalists that we are bringing forward this evening for approval, and that's Ms. Lindsay Chandelia. If you want to come up to the microphone. We had over, we had sixty-nine applicants for the vacancy of the Amy Bell principal position with Katie Cole moving to the district level next year. Of those sixty-nine applicants, twelve were screened by myself, Ms. Alton Dorff, Mr. Nowak, and Mr. Mizziak and thirty-to-forty-minute screeners, where we asked a series of questions related to leadership and engagement in community and with students. From there, we were able to bring forward four finalists to a community group, as well as a teacher group that some of our participants here this evening were a part of. They should get like badges for everything they do. So as well as we surveyed our Amy Bell parents, those who have children going into grades, kindergarten through fifth grade next year, so the current four K through fourth grade families. We had, I believe, a hundred and twenty-seven responses of surveys on the top. We provided seven attributes they'd like to see in their next principal, ranking their top three. From then, parents, a parent group, Mr. Brown, myself, Ms. Alton Dorff, and Mr. Gonzalez, one of our elementary principals, led a community group where we put Lindsay and the other candidates through a performance task where they had to build out a thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan and present to the group based on the attributes the parent shared they want to see in their next principal. In the other room, Mr. Mizziak facilitated about fourteen Amy Bell staff members and Mr. Nowak in running candidates through a process of an analysis of the Amy Bell State Report Card and how they will utilize that data and leverage it to improve outcomes for all kids at Amy Bell. So at the end of all of that, those who are still standing, we, we did this, talked with, but I checked references. Lindsay was a clear-cut finalist in both groups, as I stated in the background. Her references, as I called and spoke with them, you know, talked about her ability to think strategically as a leader in her current role as an assistant principal in the Pewaki School District at Horizon Elementary, as well as Lindsay's impeccable background of being a lower elementary teacher and then an administrator in an elementary building. She brings a lot of the attributes parents wanted to see, as well as our staff. And I think the other piece that really shined through throughout, not only presenting about herself with her references, and when we went on site to Amy Bell and she talked with teachers, as well as students, was, she was very kid-focused and she has a very warm and caring personality that I think you saw this evening as a board. So without further ado, I would ask that the board approve the presented contract for Lindsay to be our next Amy Bell Principal.
Fantastic. I guess I'll hear a motion on that before discussion.
Motion to approve the contract presented and hire Ms. Lindsay Candela?
Yeah, it's a tricky one, Chandelia.
Chandelia? As the principal of Amy Bell Elementary School.
There's a typo, just school.
School. Period.
Mr. Loth with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Open for discussion.
I will say, it was a pleasure meeting you early this evening and the fact that you made it this far through a board meeting and having to run out to the door. You must be the right person for you. You have my full support. It was great to get to meet you tonight and I look forward to having you as one of our principals, doing great things.
Yeah, I look forward to it too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for exposing yourself to those rigorous panels. It's interesting, I've been able to sit, and Mr. Brown was in on the, uh, community side for your interview and I heard great things on that.
That was a great process, very thorough. Yeah, very thorough.
So, and I think that, that speaks the, the board's commitment to a process. And Dr. Reuter, Mr. Mizziak, and the rest of our administration bringing these processes and really, really delving into it while it adds a little layer to some stuff. It makes sure we get the cream of the crop to the top. We're very proud to be able to bring you forward for this opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all, I appreciate it, I really do. And I make you proud.
It's on camera now.
Can't go back now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, we have ourselves a new principal. On the flip note, B, Discussion, Action to Approve Administrator Resignation, Dr. Reuter.
So we're just going to hit duplicate and run a similar process. Sad to me this evening, Mr. Eisenbach's here. Andy came and spoke with myself and Mike last week and he did tender his resignation as county line principal. He found an opportunity in the Swallow School District to be a four K through eight principal. And as he shared with me, get back to some roots with middle school and a new opportunity to lead another school. And in this case, part of his, one building school district. So we, we thank Mr. Eisenbach for his leadership the past seven years at County Line, as well as in the school district. He alerted families and his staff last week, Thursday and Friday. And so we asked for you to approve his resignation. He will be here through the month of June to fulfill his contract before starting in Swallow July one and to allow for us to post that position and get moving on replacing Mr. Eisenbach. If you had anything you wanted to share, Andy?
No. I was just going to say, sorry, I'm not close to the mic, you know, I, when I came here August of twenty seventeen, I sat in this very room and, you know, the board there accepted my first contract, so I just wanted to come full circle and cheer to my as well.
With that, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve Andy Eisenbach's resignation as county line principal effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and to post for the county line principal position.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollack with the second discussion.
I will say, Andy, thank you for your service. You did a great job while you were there. It's kind of my kids alma mater going through county line, so I have a lot of contacts still there and I've heard great things about you the whole time. So appreciate all that you've done to keep county line great and good luck in your new endeavors. Much appreciated.
Yeah, I never heard bad things come out of county line, so I know you will be missed there. But I still want to see the video of the pie in the face.
It exists, I guarantee. No, I can't, I'd like to say, a little disappointed to, to hear this news last week, but fully understand sometimes the time is, is now to move on. So we appreciate your service. Obviously, you've left that, that building in a better spot. Thank you for that. Mr. Loth?
Thank you, we're sorry to see you leave, but thank you for your service. On our last building tour, it was noted that you were on top of maintenance issues in the building and you took care of a lot of things on your own. And also, it was pointed out that you had personally made all the teacher wooden nameplates by their doors. And I, I looked at all of these and I was kind of like, wow. Where'd you find the time to make all of those? But they, they were really nice, I was really impressed. So thank you and good luck in your next endeavor at the Swallow School.
You're welcome. Any other comments? See and done, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item C, Discussion, Action to Approve Overnight Travel Training Request to Germany, Mr. Michael Knox, Germantown High School.
Yeah, we have Mr. Knox here this evening to present for the overnight travel request to Germany. And I'm very grateful for him to be here because there are words in this report I can't say. So I'll let Mr. Knox give a little bit of background on the trip. He's asking for approval this evening for overnight request and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for, I'm here. The trip we're looking at is considered a gap exchange. So it's a partner exchange where we travel for, well, first we'll host if it's approved. Our partner school would be the Altisca First. It's a, it's a, it's an old school. It's a, a private school in Germany where they would come to see us for about three weeks. They would stay with us, it's their break, but they would be with us during the school year. So it's a, it's a school-to-school exchange. Families stay, so they'll be staying with our students. Very great opportunity to build connections. And then our students would go and visit their school the following summer. We'll be out of school, but they'll still be in session. So again, it's a school-to-school exchange. And since we'll be staying with their families, it's really, it's a great chance for students to get to know each other on a very personal level. They're really immersed in the, in the culture and the community while they're there because they're staying with families, as opposed to, say, traveling and staying at hotels. And also for, I think it's a great opportunity because it really keeps the cost down and it makes it something that's more possible for really, for, for more students, as opposed to just a, a more tour-based trip becomes a lot more expensive. So three weeks hosting, three weeks visiting, and then we're trying to be flexible on giving students a different way of participating. If you can host, but you can't travel, or you can travel, but you can't host, it isn't always contingent. You have to do both. Anything we can do to really get Germany here and then get Germantown there in, in any form is a, it's a, a great opportunity.
Thank you. Fantastic. I'll hear a motion before discussion.
Motion to approve up to twenty-five students and two chaperones to travel to Benheim, Hesse, in Germany from June twelfth through July second, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Pollack with the second, any discussion?
I'm wondering if it's possible to have any students report out, like we had the FBLA students? You know, I think it'd be interesting to hear from them at a board meeting.
Maybe after we host and then, in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, once they're, once they're back.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're back in school, you know, we wouldn't, I guess we wouldn't want to drag them in, you know, in summer. What's left of their summer vacation here, I believe. But, you know, it'd be nice to, and, and those that are still in our district. Will they all still be in our district yet, I think?
For the most part, the students who are traveling, two of them who are, have shown interest would be graduating and then traveling, but for the most part, it is students who are currently freshmen, sophomores.
Yeah, if it, it might be interesting to hear what they have to say. I think, you know, brief, it doesn't have to be a, you know, hour-long dissertation, you know, but it'd be nice to hear a few things, I'm sure it'll be interesting.
I don't have any twins who are like this. Well, I'll see what we can work out. I think students would, would have a, that would be a great opportunity for the students to come and share what they've gotten out of it also.
And the board doesn't bite or anything, we're just regular people, so there's not, I, I realize they're, you know, public speaking and it's a little bit of a, maybe a stress factor, but, you know, we're just a bunch of nice people that would, are interested in their experience.
We'll make note of that.
I'll say, these are the kind of learning opportunities, and we do a lot of this in Germantown, but this is kind of a little extra special, having them come here and go there. But to be able to learn, you know, in-house, literally, you go to somebody's house in Germany and learn the culture and you're getting immersed in it. You can't find a better way to teach children how to be educated. I mean, it's a perfect example of the things that we do that really help educate our students. So I applaud you for coming up with this.
Thank you, it is a, it's a great opportunity, I think, for the students, they build lifelong connections. My own experience, I'm still in touch with friends from when I had a chance to do something like this. And, yeah, it doesn't go away anytime soon, so.
Excellent. Good echo of that. Thanks for opening the door for the students. Thanks for the families that are going to welcome the students that come in. For you to be able to open that door for them and them to be able to have the courage to step through that, that makes this district special, so. Similar with FBLA and our tech ad that we saw earlier from the middle school. It's fantastic, thank you.
I'll, I'll just say that this can be life-changing for kids. I have a friend that did it in high school and she ended up moving to Germany after high school. And ten years later, she said, I even think in German now. So she's totally immersed in it now. She wouldn't have done that without the opportunity to travel there through this, through the high school, so. You never know what's going to come out of it.
Awesome. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Item D, Discussion, Action to Approve Overnight Travel Request for DI, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Yes, DI Destination Imagination will compete May twenty-first through the twenty-sixth at the Kansas City Missouri Convention Center. Fifty-two students and twelve team managers will attend this competition. Student fundraising, parents and/or donations will pay for the registration, transportation, meal, and lodging. There's no cost to the district, so we're just looking for approval this evening for overnight travel.
Hear a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve fifty-two students and twelve team managers to travel to Kansas City, Missouri Convention Center from May twenty-first through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, to attend the global finals DI competition.
Second.
Mr. Pollack with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second, any discussion? See and done, another, another great opportunity, obviously, for students. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Ten E, Discussion, Action to Approve Overnight Travel Request, Best Buddies, Dr. Reuter.
Yes, Lisa Densing, our advisor for Best Buddies at the high school, is requesting overnight travel for next year's co-presidents of the Best Buddies co-curricular at the high school for the Best Buddies Leadership Conference, which will be held July nineteenth through the twenty-second at Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana. Parents will register their students through the Best Buddies International Program and the Best Buddies Club will cover the cost of registration and transportation. The estimated cost is one thousand fifty dollars. So looking for approval for two students to attend that overnight travel.
Fantastic, hear a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve two students to attend the Best Buddies Leadership Conference from July nineteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana.
Second.
Mr. Pollack with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, any discussion? See and done, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Brings us to the final motion I'll hear tonight.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollack with the second, any discussion? Refusing to hear anymore. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, we are adjourned at, sorry, eight forty-seven PM. Thank you.